The April 22, 2021 Meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Tamburello.
Here.
Mr. Treewasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Anderson, may I have a moment, please?
Yes.
This evening, we're privileged to have with us Honorable Mayor McCormick, Speaker of the House Craig Coughlin, Assemblywoman Yvonne Lopez, and Independent Club of Colonia President Phil Hall. I believe our guests have a very special proclamation to present this evening. Would someone like to come up to the microphone and say a few words?
Oh, Phil. Oh, no, Phil, over here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and we'd like to come on behalf of the Independent Club of Colonia. That community organization has been around since the mid-'40s, incorporated in 1949, and officially established a building in 1953. So, we've been serving the community for over 70 years. With that being said, each year, we present an outstanding service award, a community award, or diversity award, or leadership award to someone that we feel has provided an outstanding service to the community, specifically Woodbridge Township. This year, the recipient of that award is going to go to the honorable President, Madam Marie Ward Anderson. And it simply reads, "Independent Club of Colonia 2021 Leadership Excellence Award, presented to Marie Ward Anderson, President, Woodbridge Township Board of Education, in appreciation and recognition of your exceptional leadership, visionary guidance, and unconditional commitment serving your community, inspiring and encouraging future generations' diversity, respect, creativity, and innovation." Madam President, you also are the first black female president of Woodbridge Township Board of Education. We congratulate and salute you.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first chance to be in this school. What a beautiful place. What a great job you all did. You should be proud of the work. It is really gorgeous, and it's a special occasion to be here tonight on behalf of myself and my colleagues, Assemblywoman Lopez, who was trying to get here. I don't see her, but she certainly sends her regards. And Senator Vitale, who sends his regards, couldn't be with us tonight. But Marie, we're all thinking of you tonight as we have the privilege of presenting you with this resolution. Now, we don't get along all the time in Trenton, but everybody agreed, all 120 of us, that you're a very special person and that your honor, the honor you just received from the Independent Club, is noteworthy. And it pales in comparison, though, to the accomplishments that you've achieved. The first, as Phil Hall, and you never want to follow Phil Hall to the microphone, right? The first black woman to, I think the first black person to serve as president of this Board of Education. The work that you have done in the district-wide creation of the Board's Equity Commission to make sure that students receive the best education they can, take it into mind, things like equity and justice, and all of those things that we have come to understand are so critically important, and you've been a real leader in that way. And of course, the work that you have done helping school employees receive vaccines. You pulled a couple of strings, I heard, from time to time with the folks at work, but for noble purpose. Those are the kind of strings we like to hear people pulling. And so, it goes without saying that you, your husband Jim, your sons are incredibly proud, but all of us who call Woodbridge our home are incredibly proud of you as well, and we're lucky to have you. So, congratulations. It's my privilege to present you with this revolution, resolution, on behalf of the New Jersey State Legislature. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I hate going last because everybody said everything I wanted to say. First, I want to recognize Councilman Kyle Anderson, my colleague in public service and township government, who's a past winner of this award for the Independent Club. I don't want to thank Phil Hall for being here on behalf of the club. It's an amazing organization that does great things for our township, and we love working with them. And they have decided to honor Marie Anderson, who is somebody I got to know very well in the past couple of years. She is becoming, or has become, and is working on, being a diversity expert. She is taking courses. She is learning at her job how to do, how to be a resource for people like me and people like you. And the fact that somebody with that background, that education, that experience, leads the Woodbridge Township Board of Education, which is a board that probably has over half of the students, minority students, and a town that has nearly half of our population, minority population, and we are as diverse as they come, and we're in the state of New Jersey, which is as diverse as they come. So, to have somebody like you leading the Board of Education for this year and being involved, hopefully, in the Board long after that, and somebody who I plan on tapping into as a resource to help us. Diversity right now is what everybody is talking about all over the country. It is such an important issue in government, in the workforce, and just in society. Everybody's talking about it. Everybody needs to be educated about it and how to deal with it and how to achieve it. And the fact that you are already and soon to become officially, I don't know what the certification is called, but there is a Commission on Diversity, and you're going to be one of the first graduates of that program in the state, and I just can't tell you how proud I am of you and that you are so involved in this community. We plan to ask you for your help as we deal with the same issues as the township government. You're fantastic. It's, I'm so proud to be able to be here to present you with this award. And I also have an award from the Board of Education that Dr. Zega asked. Now, I know, Doc, you have to watch the town dollars, the tax dollars, but this looks like it costs 49 cents. I mean, maybe we can do a little better with the Board proclamations. And mine's not much better. It's not nearly as good as Craig's or Phil's, but, Doc, in the future, maybe the Dollar Tree's probably not the place to shop for the proclamations. But I want to say congratulations to Marie. This is an honor you very much deserve. The Independent Club is a great club, and they're honoring you. I think it's great, so congratulations.
Thank you to Speaker Craig Coughlin, Mayor McCormick, Phil Hall, and the Independent Club, Councilman Kyle Anderson, brother-in-law Kyle Anderson. My family's here, and I'm so grateful. I knew something was up when I saw my family coming into the meeting as I started to prep. So, I really appreciate that. I'm dedicated to Woodbridge Township, and I want to make sure that our students continue to get the best education. I want to do whatever I can in the field of diversity to help our township. And again, I'm just very grateful, and I appreciate this recognition. Thank you so much.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows. January 11, 2021, emailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the municipal clerk's office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Mr. Velez, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for the approval of the following closed session statement. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. Discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Please rise for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
Sub motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Tamburello.
Here.
Mr. Treewasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here. Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings?
Sub motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Madam President. On March 16, 2021, we opened IFB 21-01 for athletic team supplies and equipment for the '21-'22 school year.
Dr. Zega, please state for the record the superintendent's report for the month of March 2021.
Madam President, I have the student registers and fire control report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and the reports of the attendance officers.
This is the student rep. She's ready for mail. She's sitting down. Dr. Zega, please introduce our student representative from Colonia High School, Heshwin Singh.
Heshwin has been a model student during her four years at Colonia High School, as she has been involved in so many different activities while still pushing herself to do extremely well academically. Between organizing a school-wide blood drive as a sophomore, a member of so many leadership committees and clubs such as Student Council, Student Advisory, Marching Band, Peer Leadership, Interact Club, Diversity Council, Student-led Action Committee, and CHS Mini-Thon, and much more, she has always strived to help events and activities be successful. She has played a major role as a student leader for the 2019 Colonia High School Mini-Thon and the upcoming 2021 CHS Mini-Thon. Without her ideas and planning, the events would not have been as successful. Most recently, Heshwin was one of only 600 students nationwide to receive a National Honor Society Scholarship based on her academics, character, service, and leadership. Her passion for neuroscience has led her to a tough decision for next year, a combined undergraduate medical school program at Stony Brook University or the Honors College at Emory University. Heshwin is a very driven, goal-oriented, extremely hard-working, and focused student who will do what it takes to do well. She has incredibly strong academic capabilities and effective community-building skills, so she will do very well going forward.
Heshwin?
Thank you so much. I have the activities for the activities. So, for '22, Black History Month was recognized by two adolescents reported by Stanford students. The book, 20 Greatest Moments in Black History That Changed the World, was read by a school line. Forty-five students completed a dare for grand time at the event, and Alyssa, Marla, and Vala were recognized for their exceptional behaviors. Students and teachers celebrated a wonderful school on February 12th, addressed a model of 100 years old. And over 1,214 pounds of food was collected and included to the leafy Woodbridge food menu. On February 26, the course participated in a nationwide virtual performance of the Family Voice and Sing to honor Black History Month. Our winners of the Byron Hood Junior Essence Contest were Alyssa, Asha, Lila, and Madison. Read Across America Day was celebrated on March 16th. Over 3,200 pounds of clothing was collected during the spring clothing drive. Women's history ones were recognized in five evening lessons reported by great boys students, and both girls significantly improved throughout history for all the creative. National Foreign Language Week was celebrated with teacher-led dialogue sessions, with a special foreign language, and with foreign language songs. Optimus Awards Day was celebrated on April 6th, and by Mary Boo, teaching lessons on off-site American and Colorado students. Student Barbara and Melba were recognized by eating with young poets on March 14th. Martin 33 was completed with Sunday students in grades 4 and 5, making the month memorable. For our school 103, they celebrated an intensive school, family interest programs such as Family Mouth, Family Science, and Family Reading, and students staff participated in the leafy Woodbridge food, and participated in the evening with young poets, an ASI game, a jump start to summer reading, they celebrated a recent read across America, recognized Black History Month, and Women's History Month, celebrated Earth Day, and Optimus Awards Day.
For Avonel Middle School, the Wildcat Daily News Team is producing a first-rate daily video production. The students are working on presenting the second virtual school play this year, and strengthening families program was a tremendous success. The AMS Family Book Club promotes the students of love of reading, and the recent special events included the Midyear Parent Event, Family Literacy Night, the District Evening with Young Poets, and the monthly celebrations of diversity. The Media Center now includes a new iMac computer and video production, and students are active in a variety of clubs including esports, journalism, community service, songwriting, STEM, FBLA, technology, fitness, yoga, yearbook, world language, and youth empowerment. The entire Student Council coordinated school-wide spirit days, and the entire school community participated in the Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive. And lastly, Colonia High School, the CHS Spring Musical Little Shop of Horror show dates are May 11 through 14 at 7:00 p.m., with the rain dates being May 15 and 16 at 7:00 p.m. The location will be the side parking lot of CHS by door number 2, and please bring your own lawn chairs, as there will be painted boxes to sit in to provide for social distancing, and please wear masks. Ticket rest bands will be $10 each and can be purchased by visiting the Google Sites page for Mrs. Placco or by emailing chstheatertickets@gmail.com. The ticket pickup must be and paid for between May 3 to 7 from 5 to 8 p.m. at door number 2. CHS had put into place restorative practices in response to bullying incidents to repair relationships through education, and donations of over $10,000 helped support Senior Thomas Ammullen of Trip 523 run an Eagle Scout project to install benches, shrubbery, mulch, and a bicycle rack at CHS. And Amelia Curia and Cheyenne Weiner had their paper selected for the Jersey Shore Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. Both students will have the opportunity to compete for scholarships and awards. The CHS declaration received its second badge of the year. Emily Spiller received the declaration's first Best of SNO publication of the year for her Girl Empowerment podcast called Beyond the Ponytail. Brian Alexis and Jacob Abdallahheed got accepted into the NJ Seeds Program. Shakti Ventiganason was nominated for the Governor's School in the Sciences. And congratulations to Mr. Rollis, who received a grant from the Physical Science Research Associates. Senior Stephanie Maldonvik recently won a piano competition and was invited to play at Carnegie Hall with their Symphony Orchestra. Colonia High School is part of the Central Jersey Center for Excellence and Equity. This month, we finalized an anti-racism pledge and anti-racism resources for the district with the help of Ford's middle school students and very own students. This is part of the first project as we prepare to share the pledge and compile a video and lessons that can be used in the classroom. Students in CJCE, Kylie Padilla, Jevon White, Jasmine Turkson, and Shakti Ventiganason have attended student meetings and organized information which will be shared throughout our school community. Thank you.
Ms. Singh, I was informed that you will be joining us for the rest of the meeting.
Yes.
Welcome. I would like to also acknowledge Ms. Murphy, Vice Principal of Colonia High School. Thank you for coming out to support Ms. Singh. To facilitate the flow of this meeting, all questions and comments from the public will be addressed after the presentation of all agendas. By the order of the Governor, all attendees must observe social distancing guidelines and wear masks for the entirety of the meeting. Superintendent's agenda. Dr. Zega, do you have any recommendations?
Madam President, I have 20 items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
Sub motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molnar. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Policy and planning, Mr. Harris.
Thanks, Ms. Anderson. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 15 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tamburello. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I just want to recognize items number 14 and 15. This evening, item number 14, we are creating a social and emotional learning policy. It's been worked on over the past, I believe, year-plus under the leadership of Ms. Bear, and I know over the summer, we'll be putting some of the meat on the bones, if you will, to implement that new policy for September. Social and emotional learning is one of the in-vogue terms and practices in education these days with a focus on the, for lack of a better word, the social and emotional intelligence and well-being of students and their interaction with their classmates and their teachers and such. So, I want to thank the administration for putting, for helping putting that into practice, and I look forward to the end result later this summer when we implement it next school year. And last but not least, item number 15, under my agenda, I want to just recognize that the two unused snow days. Get excited, everybody. We have a five-day weekend coming up for Memorial Day Weekend this year, so that you'll see that Friday, the 28th, will now be a no-school day, and Tuesday, June 1st, will also not be an instruction day as well. So, everybody, enjoy your Memorial Day Weekend in a safe and enjoyable manner. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate the time.
Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Curriculum, Mr. Treewasser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Finance and insurance, Mr. Tamburello.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 22 items. This evening, I move for the adoption of the foregoing 22 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Tamburello.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Technology, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Madam President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing seven items.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Madam President.
Mr. Tamburello.
Thank you. Item six and seven, I was reading the task force comments this morning as far as recommendations and suggestions for devices. I'm proud to see, the comments that I read, apparently, are boots on the ground requesting these devices, so I'm happy to see that we're getting them, the tools that they're asking for. So, I full-heartedly support the purchase of these devices, and I'm glad we're doing that for, based on the recommendation of the task force, and certainly, the task force chairs had some good things to say about the laptops. So, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Right. Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following recommendations. Tonight, I'll be moving 12 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following recommendations. Tonight, I'll be moving 12 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello.
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Madam President?
Mr. Harris.
I just want to highlight number two. Last month, I gave an update on the referendum, and this is a big one, item number two, specifically, Thank you, Madam President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Madam President?
Mr. Harris.
I just want to highlight number two. Last month, I gave an update on the referendum, and this is a big one, item number two. Specifically, it's $3.5 million for the awarding of the contract to a contractor to construct the corridors connecting the individual pods at School 24 in Island and School 22 in Colonia. Long-sought improvements to our district, and once again, a giant thank you to the voters of Woodbridge Township and the leadership in this town for making that possible. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Transportation, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Cafeteria, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Madam President. The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator/Board Secretary presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Madam President?
Mr. Molnar?
Through the chair to, I guess, Mr. Wolferman, the price for the lunches, that's been staying steady?
Mr. Molnar, yes, this is the same as it's been. No change.
Thank you.
Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Equity Commission, Mr. Treewasser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I will move 38 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. I'd like to take a moment at this time to acknowledge and recognize our Superintendent, Dr. Robert Zega. Dr. Zega has always been committed to our students, parents, teachers, staff, and Board members. I've always been impressed by the level of commitment Dr. Zega has. Dr. Zega is so committed that he has offered to help with the transition of our new Superintendent. I am truly grateful and I appreciate all the work that he has done for our school district. Thank you, Dr. Zega. At this time, I call upon Ms. Bordain.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas state law requires that all Superintendents shall be appointed by contract for a term not less than three nor more than five years in duration, and whereas all employment contracts between the Board of Education and its Superintendent must be approved by the Executive County Superintendent, and whereas the Board and Dr. Joseph Massimino have developed a mutually acceptable employment contract, and whereas Executive County Superintendent assigned to the Board has approved the proposed employment agreement between the Board and Dr. Massimino. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board hereby approves the set employment contract for a five-year term commencing on July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2026, and appoints Dr. Joseph Massimino as Superintendent of Schools in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the employment contract, which are incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein, and be it further resolved that the Board President is authorized to execute the employment agreement on behalf of the Board.
I have a motion by Ms. Bordain. Can I be second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana.
If I can, Madam President, before, yes, before we go to a role-call vote, this requires a role-call vote, let's try to remind the members of the Board who are conflicted to please abstain on this matter. The only people eligible to participate in this vote are those who are not conflicted. Okay.
Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
I'll be abstaining.
Mr. Harris?
Abstain.
Mr. Molnar?
Abstain.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Abstain.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. At this point, I would like to announce that our next Superintendent is Dr. Joseph Massimino. It is nice to see someone with such talent, skills, and experience come up through the ranks to the level of Superintendent. Retention of highly talented employees is critical for the success of a school district. Congratulations, Dr. Joseph Massimino. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
I don't. Thank you.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Is there any, is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Board?
Madam President?
Mr. Molnar?
I'd just like to make two quick comments. First, thank you to Dr. Zega for your service to not only the students in Woodbridge, but to the residents of Woodbridge. You know, we went to high school together and we didn't know each other in high school, but I got to know you in my years on the Board, interviewing you twice for the Superintendent's positions. That's the one thing about, you know, the Superintendent searches that I've been on, where you go through the interview process and you get to interview not only anybody from the outside, but you get to know your in-house employees and you get to see basically the stable you have of the up-and-coming rising stars. Woodbridge is a hard district. It's just, I always say it, you have, you know, the nine egos of the Board members. There's politics. It's a very hard district. And, you know, Dr. Massimino, I wish you all the luck in the world. You know, you're going to be my, I guess, fourth Superintendent that I've been here for. And, you know, we've always had good leadership at the top, and I'm sure that it's going to be this way going forward, so I congratulate you on the task at hand. You know, just, but just going back to Dr. Zega, just thank you for your dedication to the students and, you know, for serving in the role for this next, you know, couple months until the school year is done. You know, looking at, you know, these past two years, just getting through this COVID crisis, I mean, this was not an easy thing to navigate, and, you know, your leadership, you were a beacon of light, you were the compass that, you know, guided us through this, this crisis. The bond referendums, the building of buildings, you should be proud of the resume that you have, and we thank you for your leadership during this time. And then the last comment I'd like to do is congratulate our President for your great honor that you received today. It's very well-deserving. You have been a champion on issues of race and equity, and, you know, there's nobody better to be in this leadership role on this Board than you. Congratulations again. And two things that make you a trailblazer. You've got basically the legislative body in the state of New Jersey, as Speaker Coughlin said, to be unanimous, 120, you know, unanimous for you, but also how you had the dignitaries come up to you instead of you doing the walk-handshake, the horseshoe. So congratulations on a great honor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Harris?
Sure. I didn't have anything prepared for Dr. Zega or Dr. Massimino tonight. Well, I'll do that at a future board meeting. Brian, nice comments tonight. But I did have my usual prepared shout-outs, so I'll just run through them and direct them at the audience here. Spoke with Mr. Sinelli, our Director of Cafeteria, and I saw it confirmed in the news today that the federal U.S. Department of Agriculture has extended free meals to students for the entire next school year, like we had this year. So I think that will be, that will be a heavy lift for our cafeteria department, but they've risen to the occasion over the past, like they do every year, but particularly over the past year or so, when the free and reduced breakfast, excuse me, free and reduced meal program was extended to all students regardless of income this past year. That will be extended through next school year, and I think that's a credit and it's greatly appreciated from the federal government to extend that to our students once more. Nextly, I don't know, I hope I'm not stealing it from anybody else, but I saw it in the news as well today. It's been one of the hot topics in Trenton, is what is the prom and graduation guidance that we're all anticipating from the Governor and the Department of Education that is expected next week? So all those juniors and seniors who are eagerly awaiting prom and graduation information, the guidance is coming from Trenton next week. And I know Dr. Zega and the rest of the prom committees at the three high schools will, and graduation committees will put that at the appropriate effect. You know, actually, it's only the two tonight. So thank you, Madam President, for the time.
Madam President?
Mr. Tamburello?
Thank you. I too will reserve my comments for Dr. Zega and Dr. Massimino for a future meeting soon in the weeks to come, but I appreciate both these gentlemen's friendship and leadership, and I'll have more to say about them in the coming meetings. Two things I want to, we should have mentioned it in finance, upcoming meetings for the Board, budget adoption. The next one, open public meeting, where we listen to the, well, we listen to our constituents all year round, but specifically on the budget, will be Thursday, April 29th at 6:00 p.m. right here. That's an open, public budget meeting. I encourage everybody to be here on the 29th. Let us hear your comments, and you could hear our direction for the district via the budget. Final adoption, I believe we settled on May 4th. I hope, I'm not giving bad information out, but I see Ms. Rooney and the President nodding yes. So we're May 4th for final budget adoption, so be on the lookout for those two, those two dates. And finally, I have a shout-out for the king of shout-outs, Mr. Harris. He's probably going to be embarrassed, but congratulations to you also on the most successful Colonia cleanup effort this past Saturday. I remember doing this, you know, 20 years, and if we had literally 30, 40, 50 kids show up, great, great volunteer effort. Many groups, American Irish, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, high school kids, honest societies. I don't have the exact number, but 180 volunteers on a Saturday in April to clean up in and around Colonia. I see Ms. Murphy, I'm sure a bunch of your kids were out there all day Saturday. And Charlie Shaughnessy Park is the place, it's twice a year. And again, I remember doing it years ago, and we had a couple dozen. For 180 kids, it's a huge, huge effort. A lot of kids wanted to get out, and, you know, we all know, late-grade Charlie Shaughnessy, he's smiling, I'm sure he was smiling that day down on you and your crew there, Dan. So good job on that, getting 180 people out there. Town looks clean, clean as ever. That's all I have, Ms. President. Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Can I give one more?
Ms. Bordain?
Everyone else?
Well, I have a few things. I'm going to, I'll make it quick. One, I just wanted to point out that the virtual SAT Boot Camp is being held Saturday, May 1st, 2021. I'm not, I think that, would the flyer, Dan, be on the district website with the information?
Definitely on the social media, but we can make sure it's on the website.
All information can be found there. Registration is by 4/26, and I cannot read, there's a Google form, but it is going to be virtual via Google Meet. And that's the Free SAT Boot Camp. The second thing is Happy Earth Day. It is, you know, important to keep our earth clean, piggybacking on what Ezio said with Dan's efforts to clean up Colonia. I did hear that they had to send people off to alternate locations, there were way too many people for even the park, so, you know, it was spread out throughout the town, and that's really great to hear. In celebration of Earth Day, on Saturday, May 1st, from 9:00 to 1:00 in the Town Hall parking lot, there will be an environmental, sponsored by, I guess, the Woodbridge Environmental Commission, Earth Day Arbor Day Celebration. They'll have a toy exchange, fitness classes, Blue Acre Tours, vendors and giveaways. And, Dan, that will be also on social media and on the township website?
Yeah, the township's been promoting it, yes.
Okay. And lastly, I just want to point out, Woodbridge was one of the first towns to raise a flag for autism awareness. Last year, unfortunately, we were unable to do that due to the pandemic. They raised the flag, we did not have a proclamation or a celebration. Normally, on a council meeting night, we're able to gather indoors, and the mayor says a lot of really nice things to our kids and our families, and then raises a flag. Last year, we weren't able to do that. This year, we were able to resume with an outdoor celebration, the proclamation with the council people, the mayor, and a bunch of our families. We were able to gather around the flagpole. If you drive down past Town Hall, you'll see the autism flag waving. It's a little tattered, we need a new one, but we were able to do that this year. So I want to thank the township for always supporting our kids and showing that, you know, we're all in this together. The township is a great resource for a lot of our families, so, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And, Eze, thank you for the kind words. To echo his point to the entire community, in particular, our high schools and our middle schools and our elementary schools, who had Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, students from different organizations who came out to the cleanup, and thank you very much. I think we had at least two teachers who came out and participated, so, thank you to the two of you. You know who you are, I've reached out to you since. What I wanted to recognize was Ms. Singh, this evening, so it's a statewide movement to add a student representative to every school board. You're not an official voting member, but what we're going to do as a policy is invite a student, typically a senior, to be, to sit on the school board every meeting. Historically, we've had a student come, give an update, and leave, but we ask that, you But we ask that, you know, you and your fellow other student representatives from the two other high schools, feel free to be active and, you know, take things back to your high school classmates and let us know, you know, consider us like a colleague now. Ms. Singh, you are, you're breaking the glass ceiling this evening. You are the first, when we adopted this policy, I think in the fall, you were the first one to be officially here. So congratulations and thanks for being here. Look forward to speaking with you afterwards. I want to talk about the Colonial High School senior play when you're done. So thank you, Ms. Anderson and Dr. Zaga, for putting that policy into effect tonight for our first student representative. Thank you.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Just two things, just real quick. First, I'd like to congratulate you on your award tonight. It was an honor to be here to see you get it. And believe me, you will deserve it. The mayor said that by you being a resource, it's good that we have you. We have you already, you know. So I just wanted to congratulate you. It was, we got the text to know it was going to be a surprise and I could see you were surprised.
Absolutely. I was. Thank you.
Dr. Zaga, I don't have anything prepared, but, you know, thank you for your service. We go back when you were in school '25. But we really got close last year with the pandemic. We had a lot of firsts, you know. The first time we got shut down, first in remote learning. You know, we got thrown a curveball and you handled it well. You know, first remote learning. We came to Raw Street, had our meetings in a brand new school. You know, first in having our meetings over by telephone, our first Zoom meeting, you know. So, you know, we were, we got pretty close last year as board president and the superintendent. There was a lot of, a lot of challenges. And it was a pleasure to work with you last year and all the years prior to go back to your principal days. So, you know, like, thank you for your years of service. Dr. Massimino, congratulations. I look forward to, you know, working with you. So again, you know, thank you.
All right. So now we'll move to our public portion of the meeting. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation Number 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed all of your comments so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. For those residents who were unable to attend tonight's meeting in person, you can email your comments to superintendent@woodbridge.k12 nj.us.
Good evening. Brian Jeffroy, President, WTEA. First of all, Madam President, I want to congratulate you on the award tonight. The work that you have done for this school board, for the district, it is well deserved. And I particularly want to thank you on behalf of the staff in the district for what you did to facilitate the vaccinations for the staff. To be able to, with the administration, word date hundreds of staff members to be able to quickly, efficiently get vaccinated is crucial for the safety of both staff and students. And, you know, over the last month, probably about 600, is that about right, Doc? About 600 staff members have been able to take advantage. I know I go for shut number two tomorrow. And I can't thank you enough for what you did in that respect. Dr. Zaga, I wish you the best. We've known each other a long time from Woodbridge High School. I know we've been on opposite sides due to the nature of our positions. But you've always been respectful to me, to the association. You always wanted to take my call. So, you know, I wish you the best of luck. And Dr. Massimino, I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Long. I don't live in the township, but I am a teacher at Colonial High School. First, I just want to acknowledge both Ms. Anderson and Dr. Zaga. Congratulations to Ms. Anderson on your award tonight. And Dr. Zaga, I wish you the best in your retirement. This is for both of you, but really for everyone as a whole, if you don't mind me just taking-
Excuse me. I'm not retiring.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I misspoke. But regardless, just wanted to take a moment to also just make a general comment to the board for your leadership over the last year with the COVID-19 pandemic. Speaking as a teacher, I think the decisions that you made consistently were the best decisions for all of us and our safety. And I know I have friends who are in the same field, who don't work in our district, who were not feeling as safe as I have felt over the last year. So I want to thank you all and let you know that, at least from my perspective, I always felt very safe. So what I wanted to speak to you all about tonight is regards to the Equity Action Plan that was published in, I believe, July of last year. First, I wanted to also, for the record, thank Mr. Kendell Ali for the work that he's done this past year in getting the action plan off the ground with those of us in the schools. You know, in spite of all the challenges presented by hybrid learning, he's done a really excellent job and I've greatly appreciated his leadership over the last year. Every aspect of the Woodbridge Township School District is affected by this work because we have such a uniquely diverse district. And I really want to encourage the board to consider expanding the position that he has to a full-time position. Because as it stands, you know, it is important that the person in that position is able to oversee and measure the work that's being done from the district leadership, to the principals in the schools, to the teachers, the staff across the board. They need to have the time and the resources to do that. And that's such a massive job that it can be challenging to do and balance a secondary position. So that was the first comment I'd want to make tonight. The second comment that I wanted to make is really more of a question. Mr. Harris, you mentioned earlier, social emotional learning. Very happy to hear that is something that is already on the front of the board's mind. What I wanted to ask a little bit more about is what steps are being taken to assure that continuous learning and training is being implemented across the board? Again, from the highest levels of the administration, to the principals, to the teachers, to ensure that social emotional learning and culturally responsive teaching practices are being implemented as effectively as possible? How do we envision them being implemented? What are our long-term goals, especially where do we see ourselves this time next year? I wanted to emphasize that in particular because I feel like, in my experience, from what I've been doing this past year at Colonial High School, it is a constant process of learning. There's new ideas, new concepts, new things that are constantly being brought to my attention, new ways of thinking. And it's not a one-and-done, quick-fix solution. So I'd like to know more about what the long-term strategies and goals are, especially as we start welcoming our students back into the building. It might sound hyperbolic, but I think it's safe to say our students have experienced a great deal of trauma over the last year, whether it's because of COVID-19, whether it's because of the various incidents of racism that we have seen in our country over the last year. You know, I'm 31 years old and just scrolling through Twitter sometimes. It makes it hard to get out of bed in the morning. And I can't imagine what that must feel like, being a teenager, also having to deal with this isolation that you may be feeling over the last year. So I think the ideas of culturally responsive teaching and social emotional learning are going to be crucial as our students come back into the building. And all of us need to be prepared to have difficult conversations with our students, be prepared to help students react to situations in a way that is conducive to discussion, to building community, rather than simply pushing things aside and sweeping things aside. In closing, I'd just like to say that this work needs to be a collaborative effort from all members of the district. And I think we have a lot of potential for success, but that can only be accomplished if we are all equally invested in building the most inclusive district for our students possible. Thank you very much. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you so much for your comments. We are, we definitely agree how important, we definitely agree with you the importance of the social emotional learning of our students. So we will definitely be looking into a long-term plan to address that. Dr. Zaga, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. We actually started this work before the pandemic. And of course, when the pandemic hit and we closed down, that derailed things. Not only derailed it, but also shifted it to a different target as far as students coming, being away and coming back. You know, we're firm, all firm believers that one of the best ways to cure this is just to get students back in school safely. I think that will, you know, the S in SEL is social. And right now, as I'm sure, you know, you can ask any of our students, there is not a lot of social. So we need to get that back in our schools. And schools are where much of that social learning and that social growth takes place, especially in elementary school. So we have, we have a committee. Ms. Bear is organizing. And we will be working with universities and practitioners throughout the state for trying to implement some best practices into what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amber Jarrett from Woodbridge Proper. And I'd like to echo the congratulations to Ms. Anderson and Dr. Massimino. I was actually here too to speak about the Equity Action Plan from last July. I know when it was presented last summer, we were very excited to hear about some of the changes that were coming in the district. And as an educator, I certainly recognize the challenges that COVID have presented this year. But I do want to follow up with some inquiries about the progress in that plan. My first concern, actually, Mr. Long touched on, was the dual role that Mr. Ali is serving in right now as the Equity and Diversity Officer for the district and the K-12 math supervisor. As we all know, this is a very large district and math is a tested subject. And I can't even imagine what his job is like without this additional responsibility. I've had the pleasure to attend, you know, two meetings in which Mr. Ali participated. And I have no doubts about his qualifications or his level of dedication. But he's been tasked with some pretty hefty work on top of, like I said, an already very demanding position. We've got, what, 30 schools in our district? That's a lot. You know, I think, Dr. Zaga, you actually said in one of the meetings recently that we have a mountain to climb in terms of our equity and diversity work. Well, we just want to ensure that Mr. Ali has the resources and support he needs to promote the sustainable change that we need in our schools. Because without that, it's not going to happen. The second, I guess, inquiry I had was about the curriculum work that was not able to happen last summer and whether there were plans in place for that to take place over this summer. I know there was talk about additional courses in African Studies or other, you know, similar topics. And I just wanted to know if steps are being taken now that, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic, hopefully. And then the last thing is just, you know, again, Mr. Long touched on the idea of collaboration. And for me, as a parent, just cohesiveness and consistency across the district. One of the things in the plan was the idea of the, you know, school-based committees. And I know some schools have been very successful in implementing those and other schools are not as successful. And we spoke to Mr. Ali, you know, about levels of accountability. And I know they're giving annual reports. But I'm wondering, you know, an annual report is kind of after the fact. And I'm wondering if, you know, if there could be increased accountability where they're giving monthly, you know, these are when our meetings are. I feel like the meetings and agenda should be publicized. You know, if we want parent and community participation. As a parent, had I not been in these board meetings, I would never even know that this existed. And I don't think I'm alone in that position. So I think just increased communication about these committees in order, you know, for them to be collaborative and to have stakeholders involved. I think the racism pledge is certainly a good start, but it is just a start. And, you know, it does give some level of cohesiveness. But I think there needs to be opportunities for the schools and the leaders in the schools to collaborate with one another. And, you know, I know Colonial High School has been kind of a model. And they should have, you know, other schools should maybe have the opportunity to visit with, you know, and work with them and see what's working there. And, you know, maybe they could brainstorm and overcome some of the challenges that they may be facing. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. As far as the position we are considering, we do understand that the diversity work is a lot to do. And it should probably be under a full-time position. So we are considering that. You mentioned the fact that we wanted to get annual reports from the school equity teams. For us, we needed to see how everyone was doing. And as far as accountability, we are going to make sure, moving forward, that everyone is accountable and we're consistent with the type of work that each of the school equity teams are doing. Dr. Zaga, do we have any emails from the public?
We have two emails. First is from a Sal Vittore Cerchio. I think issues starting from the faculty needs to be addressed if we are to create an equitable environment for students. Students look to us to set the example for how they should behave. The faculty should set the tone for the building and erecting walls between departments and/or grade levels does not create a welcoming environment for students. Students will mirror what they see. Faculty members should be required not only to undergo comprehensive and interactive diversity training, but team building as well. In doing so, we will prove the notion that we are a family and not a group of strangers that interact only during school hours. One other thing I would like to see implemented is a way for students to provide feedback to the faculty based on their experience in the school. This is something that I believe should be done every other faculty meeting as a way for the faculty to understand how their behavior is affecting the building. This is not to get anyone in trouble, but we must reflect on our actions. If students do not feel comfortable or safe, they should be urged to express those opinions anonymously so the building can reflect and correct the course. And the second email is from a Pallavi Bel Shetty. Good afternoon. I'm writing in regards to the equity and diversity initiatives that have been introduced in our district. Although I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, I would like to express my support for Mr. Ali and what the administration has done. I am a teacher at Colonial High School. I feel our school, under the guidance of Ms. Jennifer Murphy, has made some great strides and changes this year. However, I don't see the same happening across the district and would like to see more done, especially to get students involved. Two questions come to mind in particular. How can the formation of the Equity and Diversity Initiatives be made more prominently known? I feel that not all students and staff are even aware that the district has these entities and how to get involved. Second question, what PD or training can be offered for district staff? And how can trainings be best utilized by staff to then turnkey to others in their building and ultimately in their classrooms? Thank you for your time.
I guess I'll take the communication question. We were actually, the Equity Commission was discussing the fact that we need to make sure that we do a little bit more PR when it comes to the work of each of the equity teams. So we were definitely aware of the fact that it wasn't the same across the district. So we are going to work on the fact that we'll increase communication to the students, to the parents, so they all know that each of the schools have a school equity team. What are they doing? What are they working on? What are their accomplishments? As well as the fact that they can be involved in the diversity councils at each of the teams, at each of the schools and what they're doing. So we are definitely going to make sure that we have a communication strategy to make sure that we get that, the good work that the schools are doing in this, in the field of diversity. And if you want to answer the PD question she had?
Sure. We're actually looking at, looking to next year's budget to allocate funds for staff training and for activities for the diversity councils and equity teams.
Madam President?
Mr. Monar.
Just to touch on what you talked about communications. I think all my years on the board, I think going back to when I first ran the first time, one of the major issues was with the parents were communication. And, you know, here we are, years later, and it's about communication. So I know you're talking about looking into it. I think we have to come up with new ideas and new ways. You know, I remember when the website, we were like, oh, we're going to put everything on the website. But websites aren't really cutting it. So I don't have to have to go do Instagram or Twitter or, you know, Facebook. Whatever we have to do, we have to maybe think outside the box for communicating because it is a whole new world out there. But it's just interesting tonight hearing about communication. And I could go back to 2005 when that was, the big issue was about how are we communicating?
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. If nothing else, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some motion?
I have a motion by Mr. Monar, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.